All set? Good evening. I'd like to call the first, uh, Town of Berlin, first public hearing to order for the charter changes, additions or changes to the agenda.
No, sir.
Public comment? Would you read us the Article One Local Options Tax?
I will. So on page two of the town charter, it's an addition of the paragraphs as follows. We've added paragraph D that reads, "Upon resolution of the select board or receipt of a petition signed by 5% of the registered voters of the town at an annual or special meeting award for the purpose, the voters of the town may vote by a majority of those present in voting to assess any or all of the following: One, a 1% sales tax; Two, a 1% rooms tax; and three, a 1% meals and alcohol beverage tax." It goes on to paragraph D2, "To be added, a tax imposed under the authority of this section shall be collected and administered by the Department of Taxes in accordance with 22 VSA Section 138." And then paragraph D3, "Revenues received through the imposition of a tax imposed under this section shall be designated for capital projects within the town." And that's the Article One Local Options Tax portion of the charter change.
Okay, any comments on this? Yes?
Why did you decide to do that?
Well, we're having a lot of capital projects coming up, and we were worried about was that if we didn't impose this local option tax, what would happen is your tax rates would go up, of course, because we still have to do the projects. At least with the local options tax, we are having people from out of town help fund them. Because the most of the sales tax would be collected from the shopping mall and commercial enterprises on the Barry Mount Pillar Road. If the people there, if the people coming into town using our services are paying that 1%, then we get a benefit from it.
Somewhat of a benefit, but there's stores going out of business all the time. Restaurants are closing. I mean,
Yeah.
I can't see how it would be an improvement.
Well, the thing there would be-
And we don't keep it all. I don't know what percentage, but it goes back to-
Well, some of it does, but then the money that goes back to the state funds the- funds the pilot program, which is the payment in lieu of taxes for the state garage and those types of programs. The state hospital, on and on. So we do get, even though we lose some of it, we get it back too. And the, uh, with what we have coming up, just the Richardson Road project will be over, what? I would say 3 million. And that's gonna have to be funded somehow. And this is just one of the tools we would like to be able to use to do it.
Can I just throw out some numbers?
Sure.
I was just gonna say Vince has done the mathematical-
The twenty, for, um, 20, let me just make sure I get the right year here. 2019 dollars, uh, let me go to the latest, 2021 pilot program that we referred to. We get up to 30% for the payment in lieu of taxes. We get, we would, we got $134,700 for the pilot program. That same year for, if we had the local options tax in place, we would have gotten just a little bit over half a million dollars in, uh, in local options tax. For that, so again-
I assume if everything stays in business, you'll get the money?
Yeah, well, this was, this was based on 2021 dollars of what was in business at that,
Right.
you know, last year. 2019, for example, again, that's another COVID year. Uh, the pilot money was $103,877 that we did get. And the, I don't have the exact number right, actually I think I do in here. I just gotta find the right table. Actually, no, I don't. Was roughly $477,000, so just a little under half a million dollars for 2019. That's what it would have been based on those dollars.
And you bring up a valid point about businesses going out, but our hope is that additional businesses will come in and that will also help the growth of the town as well, as well as this to help fund the capital projects.
One of the, one of the downfalls in prior years was that Barry and Montpelier did not have the local options tax. Now they do. So it's not like we're-
They do?
Oh, yeah.
Barry just implemented it for 2022. It's effective October of this year.
No wonder I don't own a bear.
But all that would, all that would do is just, it's not gonna take and put Berlin businesses at disadvantage. So. Joe, you had something?
Oh, I was just gonna mention that both Barry and Montpelier are taking, are doing this as well, and it is, as well as you go to Burlington to say Christmas shopping and go to dinner.
Burlington and Colchester.
Williston.
You know, you're paying that off there as well.
There are many towns throughout Vermont that have implemented it in one way.
If anybody lost it, I guess.
Barry, are their option taxes full, full spectrum? Or are they still like, for a while it was just hotels and meals and alcohol?
I'm not sure what they, I'm not sure what they have right now. I don't know.
Barry, with the, with the adoption that they just did, Barry has the full, all three in place now. Montpelier has two of the three in place right now.
So which are?
Just let me check here. Montpelier has the-
Meals and hotels.
Meals, alcohol, and rooms.
Barry has merchandise as well?
Yes. They just, just adopted that one.
And we believe by implementing all three, if it were to pass in such a way, that it would benefit the town, you know, greatly overall and especially for the capital project and to help keep taxes down for residents, you know, if we didn't fill this group.
Right. I, I guess I would just like to say, you know, I, I think it would be a great way to benefit from, you know, the people that are coming into our town that are not town residents.
Get some rough numbers there, just to, so, you know, our resident population is around 2,900 residents, but during the day, um, we have over 12,000 people in town-
And that's huge.
-that are here for employment and, so, four times the amount.
And I also think it's, it's would, it's really good to, you know, implement the, you know, the, the commercial purchases, you know, not just rooms and meals and alcohol because, you know, of, of those numbers and, you know, I feel like we, we have, you know, more commercial stores than either Barry or Montpelier, quite honestly.
Well, rooms and meals, I mean, you look at rooms and meals part of it, uh, what's the, you have the numbers there, Vince?
I don't for rooms and meals.
Okay, but for the most part, we don't have that much, uh, we don't have that much restaurant business here and we don't have that much motel business here.
Actually, I take that back. Meals, rooms, and alcohol, I do have a combined number for that, if you'd like it. For 2019, um, that would have meant $138,868 if we had it in place in 2019. For 2018, it would have been, uh, significant jump, 2018 and 19, $66,238. And 2017, it would have been $59,782 for meals and rooms. Meals, rooms, and alcohol combined.
And of course, the, uh, the, 1% of meals and alcohol, I mean, you're basically taxing the convenience stores for beer, wine, and then, uh, we don't have any real buyers left in Berlin. And we have the motel, no, not even motel, we have Applebee's and, uh, the Chinese place, but there's not that, what's that?
The Boeing House, 2018.
Yeah, or there's not that many restaurants left.
East corner.
And, uh, like I said, the rooms tax, we just don't have motels like we used to. But that's been a trend for a long time, long before COVID. That trend is continuing. We do, we do have, uh, the 1% sales tax, which the town is working with the mall to try to take and develop a, a new model for them to thrive in the coming years. That's the town center plan. And, uh, that's pretty much where we're at right now. Any questions? Yeah, Tor?
This gentleman was speaking of-
What do you mean? What sort of plan are you talking about?
What's that?
What sort of plan are you talking, you say you have some kind of special thing playing here on the, for the mall?
Well, that's the new town center. We're partnering, partnering with the mall to help basically redevelop it so that it can, uh, they can have a sustainable business model.
It isn't sustainable all by itself? Why do we have to get involved in private industry?
Well, we're not really getting involved in private industry. What we're getting involved in is helping the mall with the permitting. They're the ones doing the, doing all the work, so to say.
So it's, we're doing it to bring some dollars to the grand list with the development of the housing units over there as well. They're, they're kind of breaking up their, their mall property into lots. And we're working with them on the subdivision of that, um, to bring in more housing as well. Like Fox Run, like Chestnut Place.
It would be counterproductive to that, you now requiring them to, uh, have an additional tax to collect?
What's Fox Run?
Um, it's a, it's another, uh, development that's going in for, uh, for housing units. It's a three-story?
At the mall?
I wanna say 30 units.
Yeah, I think it's like 30, 32, 34 units in that, in that range. Some one, some two, and a couple three bedroom apartments.
And I've recently been in Chestnut Place and it's beautiful.
I heard it's really nice.
Very nice. The staff, the, the community, uh, just the whole facility is beautiful as well as the rooms.
Fox Run should be breaking ground in the very near future.
And then there is, uh, Starbucks has shown some interest over there too. Putting in a restaurant, or a coffee shop, I should say.
Has the town made a decision on taking over the, the road?
No, not yet. That'll have to be brought up to standard.
They will have to bring it up to standard before the town can get over it?
Yes. Yes.
And somewhat reconfigured, I presume?
There is some changes on the, in, on the, uh, with the road, the access coming into it by, uh, Walmart. But it's, uh, one of the things they are doing is they're squaring up some of the corners so that it slows down traffic, so it won't be as rapid coming in. Uh, I believe if you want, Tom Bedowski or Vince can get you the, some of the plans, some of the drawings that they have.
There should be a fair amount of it online, or a website as well.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, there should be. If there's something that you're looking for that's not there, just give us a call.
Sure, thank you. And for folks who haven't seen it, we have a new website too now. And that's highly recommended to check that out as well.
Tor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Toring Alston Point Ridge Road. At the last hearing, uh, issue was raised regarding the language, the wording of the warning that, as written, it sounds like it would require two town votes. The initial charter change and then a subsequent town vote at a special, regular special town meeting. Has that been clarified at all?
It will be. Uh, there will be a revision to the language coming out. I'm, I'm working on that now. I looked at, it's recommended to take a look at what Barry City used for their language for a little more clarity. Uh, I'm also looking at what, uh, the leagues of cities and towns have recommended, which are closer to that than we are to Barry City. So there will be a revision to the language coming out, um, to, to make it a little more clear. There will not be two, two votes.
So the warning is not accurate as it is written now?
It is right now, uh, but there'll be a, um, there's a revision process that we have to go through, uh, for the public hearings afterwards. And that it will come out through that revision process as part of any other revisions that, that may come about based on the public hearings.
So it will ultimately be different than appears in the warning?
Correct. It could, yes. If, again, the revision will be presented, um, and then if the board approves that language, then it will be changed against what's there. But right now, what's there stands until, till that point in time.
And we're still looking at a November?
Yes.
Vote on this?
Yes.
So I mean, time is running out to get that-
Correct.
Completely.
Yeah, correct.
If not, obviously. So let me just refresh my memory. So, um, then you mentioned that the 1% sales tax would bring a little over 500,000?
Correct.
And the meals and rooms combined would bring in just under 140,000?
Correct. That's based on-
Based on the private, prior years?
Previous, yeah. That's correct.
And then, um, I guess, Mr. Sheriff, you'd go into a little bit more detail on what the capital projects are. What is the five-year plan, for instance, for the town? You've heard me say that several times, five-year plan for capital projects. But, uh, I mean, what, what, you know, specifically are we, are you looking to use the money for?
Well, right now, we have, of course, the big one from, from my point of view is Richardson Road. The culvert there is failing just the way the one on, uh,
Fisher.
Uh, what was that?
Fisher Road.
Fisher Road failed. The, uh, I'm assuming the cost is gonna be about the same, which is somewhere around 3 million, a little bit more. It's not quite the culvert that they're putting in there at, uh, at Fisher. Right now, we're, they're doing the, uh, studies on it, the, uh, engineering for it. We still have to get a hold of the state. I'm not sure. I'm assuming that because Fisher Road had to be an open bottom, that they will have Richardson Road open bottom too. An arch instead of culvert. Those projects there is what is envisioned for them to, to use the capital budget for. There's also gonna be some equipment coming right up. The loader out here in the, in the yard is getting, well, how old is that one, Vince? That's, uh-
The loader, I believe, is seven years, six, six or seven years old right now.
Yeah, I think it's older than that.
Might be.
Yeah. But, I mean, that's starting to get running because it's the same loader when you were here, Tor.
So it's, oh, it's more than that then?
So we, yeah. Are you inferring that I'm old?
No, not at all.
Jesse, it's been a long time since you've been here, Tor.
Okay, okay. Now, so that'd be, that'd be at least 10 years, so.
But, I mean, that's getting, where the cab is rotting off, of course, it's running solid. Then, of course, we can take and use it, we can use the capital budget also to, uh, to fund expected expenditures on trucks and cruisers, that, that sort of thing, so that we don't take and have hits to the, uh, hits to the, uh, budget.
And along with the expected, there's always the unexpected. And prices are not going down and they're most likely not going to go down in the near future. So things are getting more and more expensive. And the longer we put off doing some of the things we truly wanna do, like Richardson Road, it will get more expensive.
I'd like to mention one other thing too, if I may, that, that I discovered when I was doing some research on this. In, in recent state legislation, and you can go online and probably find out more, and I haven't done that in, in the past couple months, so I don't know where it stands today. But they're discussing a plan to put in place from the state level, an increase of 1% to eliminate the local options tax, um, that the towns that don't have it in place do yet. And kind of do a, uh, and manage it to distribute it to municipalities. So it would be kind of like everybody's pooling their money and the state's gonna decide how much gets distributed. Unless you have this program already in place, if you have it in place, you get to maintain and keep that program for yourself. So again, I don't know where it stands, but there's some risk there that down the road, we would lose that. That's what we don't know. The state would have basically applied a lot and then distributed it however they determine to, at this point. So we could get more, we could get less, but we don't know that yet. And I haven't seen any, any updates on that to, to know if that's changed, but. So there's a bit of risk there. They may not pass it at all, or they may, but, uh,
No, but let's-
It's another reason to consider it.
Say we had it in place right now, what percentage do we get to keep for our capital project?
Uh, we get, uh, we get 70%.
70?
70% is what we get. 30% goes to that pilot program that, uh,
Right.
the chair was speaking of. And then that 30% gets pooled and divided amongst, uh, the municipalities for, for state properties that they have in their towns.
Vince, would you also explain, cause you've said it before in another meeting back when, how the state manages it? Where it won't fall on the shoulders of, say, anyone here, staff-wise?
Right.
It's managed through the state?
The state manages the-
And then the money comes in?
Program. And they just, they mail us the, they mail us that 70% that we're due based on the dollars-
So it wouldn't be burdensome to staff?
Right. From an admin perspective, there's little to no admin for us for that.
Thank you.
But again, with the, with the local options, what would be happening is with the money going to the capital improvement, basically, you would no longer, you would have a bre- a breather of about 500,000 on your taxes. Other words, if Richardson Road comes in, and I'm assuming it's gonna be at least 3 million, but that will no longer show up on your, on, an increase in your taxes to, to fund that project. It'll be the, it'll be the, the sales tax basically that will fund that project. And I don't know, I can't remember, we got a couple other culverts. We got two out here on Crosstown and we've got, uh, the ones down there between the state police barracks and, uh,
Paint Turpik North.
And, uh, yeah, those two there. And those, so far, we've had them inspected and they said they were fine. But then again, they said that, uh, Fisher Road was fine too. It only took a couple years for that to change, so.
Again, if you want, just as far as some information in town, I think, uh, you know, we have seven bridges that we have to maintain. And we have 518 culverts, different sizes and conditions throughout town. So that's all, that's all part of it. And those that you're saying are part of those 518, so.
But those will be the big, big money ones. Those culverts. Anything else?
Pardon my asking for further clarification on the numbers again.
Sure.
But as I understand it, you said 500,000 in income from the option tax. That is, uh, previously we were, we would have been 134. So the 500 is inclusive of the 134?
No, there, there's two different numbers. For just the sales portion,
Right.
it was, it's a little over 500,000 dollars.
Yeah.
For the meals, rooms, and alcohol,
Yeah.
it would have been 138,868 in 2019.
Right. So, okay. Okay. So it wasn't, the 500 wasn't actually a gain of 366? Cause we didn't need to sub, and I understand that the meals is separate in the, in the, I don't mind.
Yeah. No, the 1% sales alone would give us a little over half a million dollars.
Yeah. Theory of logic. Finger crossed.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments on this?
The only other comment that I was gonna add is, under D2, when Vince was reading it, he meant to say 24 VSA. And you just said 22.
Oh.
But you did mean 24.
24.
I just wanted to make that clear so it's in the notes as well. No worries, no, it happens. Thank you.
If nothing else on this, we'll close the hearing on, um, the local options tax. And Vince, could you read to us the next one?
Yeah, that would be Article 2, and it would be elected to appointed clerk. And under Subchapter 4 of the Charter, Section 4.2, 4-2, elected officers. Item 2, town clerk would be, we would remove of a town clerk for a term of three years. And under Subchapter 4, Section 4-4, appointed officers, we would add Section B, addition of item 5, town clerk.
Any questions or comments on this?
What's item 5?
Item 5 would be the addition of town clerk under the appointed section.
Appointing, okay.
Yeah.
Well, why is that necessary?
Well, we've actually had several people, uh, mention it to us that we should, that we should look into it. We, as a board, are not real sure just what the public's, um, feelings are, and it just seems that the easiest way to come out with a, with a finite answer is to take and put it on the ballot. So we, we'll know.
So you're not, you're just gonna suggest changing the charter?
Well, it'll be, if, we'll take and run it through as a charter change. If it passes in November-
It'll have, it'll happen.
Then if it passes in November, then we can appoint. If it doesn't pass in November, we'll go through, they'll be elected. It won't change anything from today.
They'll be elected in November anyway because the charter change won't be changed by November.
No, but it'll, it'll take and change the, probably in January, when the legislature gets back in the session. Cause even the legislature has to approve all the charter changes.
I mean, November, we'll be electing a, uh, town clerk, right?
March.
Oh, March.
March.
So, I guess, uh,
I like it, what do you got?
I guess I, I like the way things were, I guess. I had no problem, I mean, like, what problem did you have with it? You said people sent stuff to you, and what, what problem?
Well, there was, there was several comments about, um, uh, from, uh, about the, uh, the computer, the, the records were not computerized. The people, instead of being able to sit at their computer and get to the records, and, uh, they had to come up here and, and, uh, go through the vault. One of the things that we did notice was if it had been computerized, uh, before, and we've had the program four years, five years for it to be done, and it had been done, then these, COVID wouldn't have affected the, uh, you wouldn't have had to worry about COVID in the vault. You could, they could have done it from their computer at home. And, uh, most of the people that were complaining about that, of course, were lawyers cause they do a lot of the title searches and everything. Other than that, we haven't really heard too much. We were kind of disappointed that the, uh, the program wasn't implemented back when we purchased it. And the program was not cheap. And it's, uh, that's been one of the, one of the major problems we've been hearing about. And there was, um, uh, there were, uh, other problems with, uh, what was it? Vault accessibility. There was problems with being closed on Friday. Being closed on Friday wouldn't have affected the computer system at all. Those are pretty much the, the big ones. And even though they access them through their home computer, they are billed for it. So we still get the revenue from the search.
Well, it started with being closed on Friday. I look, I mean, there's a lot of town clerks that aren't open. Some of them are open three days a week.
Yeah, but they don't do the volume we do here.
Probably not.
Was the issue that there wasn't, uh, online, was, uh, was that- Was the issue that, that there wasn't an online, was, uh, was that a hardware problem, a software problem, or personnel not having the time? I mean, do you have any idea what, why it wasn't done?
It's a very good question. We don't have an exact answer in terms of why it wasn't done. Uh, it could have been a combination of those items you just mentioned, um, but it didn't get implemented. And like Brad said, it was an expensive program, it was something that was intended to be implemented, and we're hoping with these changes that it'll be beneficial going forward. You know, rather than look at what didn't go according to plan, there were many things that did go very well in the past. And we just think that by implementing this, it will help going forward in a favorable way for the town.
Trump, Vince, the software is already five years old, it's probably out of date.
Well, the software is NEMRIC, and the whole program is, is old, but it's what the state uses, and it is still a viable pro- program. And they made updates to it as well.
And our staff is familiar with it and using it, and they speak highly of it, that they understand it, and it's working well for them. So that's good, too.
What staff?
I was speaking about Diane, Diane Isabelle, she's spoken to us about NEMRIC, and she knows it, in my opinion, inside and out, she's very good with it.
And she needed an assistant?
Was that Diane?
Yeah.
Well, yes, because the person we hired is actually an assistant to Diane and events in the administrator. And one of the problems we're having, Diane was having, is she didn't have enough time to take and start digitizing all her records. And the, the person we hired is going to start, has started to digitize the records, so that everything will be in the computer, which will speed up searches and everything else, as far as access goes. And we could have hired, I suppose we could have hired a company to do it, but we figured if we took and had an employee here, they could do it and also help Diane during tax season and, uh, take over some of the billing for the water sewer. And that's one of the things that drags Diane down, is having to do the billing. Tor?
Uh, thank you. So is it safe to assume, then, that you don't have any type of a draft position description in mind at this point as far as what you want to see from the Town Clerk's office?
Well, the Town Clerk, um, the, the, the actual job description is in statute.
But as, but as far as, I mean, I mean, the, the duties are, but as far as, like, the hours, the, you know, computerizing, the, you know, the, I guess, the logistics type of thing versus the actual day-to-day duties?
Yeah, one of the, uh, one of the things is, uh, state statute requires we have an assistant Town Clerk.
An assistant Town Clerk, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's in, it's in statute, we have to have an assistant Town Clerk. And with, of course, that is appointed by the Town Clerk. She has, since then, since being appointed as Town Clerk, she has appointed an assistant. And that'd be one of the projects that, to take and keep her busy, is to take and do the, the digitization of all the records in the vault, to get it loaded.
But any changes to, like, the office hours or anything like that?
Well, the thing there is, we, we, when we hired the Town Clerk, we did, we told her we expected, uh, five, five days a week. How she and her assistant did it, that's up to her. But the only expectation we had, and we can't really have too much say in it until she, if, unless she becomes appointed.
Well, this is my, that's, I guess that's my question, is what am I being asked to approve as a voter, what, you know, what, with this new, I won't say position, but, you know, the, the new operations look like in the future? Or what do you envision it to look like in the future? What, what are you hoping to get out of this?
Well, I'm hoping to see the Town Clerk's office opens five days a week, eight to fi- eight to four, with not necessarily both of them there at the same time, but at least have somebody there for, to have the vault opening for access.
Um, you'd mentioned the assistant Town Clerk, why don't you go ahead and add the appointment of the assistant Town Clerk to this charter change as well?
Because it's, it, even if we appoint the Town Clerk, it's her job to appoint the assistant.
But you, through the charter change, could put it on the select board to appoint the Town Clerk. That's what the whole charter change is to do things that are.
It would change.
Do things other than, but the state statute already allows.
Yeah.
So make that step now, because half the problem, I think, is that, you know, who, one of the previous appointed Town Clerks wanted to appoint as a assistant Town Clerk, without getting into that whole mess again. I mean, I think that's kind of what i- is driving all of this, I think people got their, their feelings hurt. And doing it this way really doesn't solve that problem.
Well, at the same time, though, Tor, you have to, for that office, you, you have to have two people that can get along. And I would rather have the, the, an appoint, a, a Town Clerk appoint her assistant than to have the board do it.
You just went through that with the treasurer, though, that currently doesn't, wasn't.
Well, the treasurer is no longer a, a voted position, that's all, uh.
Right, but, but, but the select board wanted the assistant treasurer, not the treasurer.
Because Diane.
And there's not, and currently, there's not an issue of them getting along, so I don't know why.
Diane.
I'm, I'm not saying that Town Clerk shouldn't have input into the process, but.
Well, Diane didn't have the authority to, there's no, nothing in statute says you have to have a assistant treasurer.
Correct.
Diane is getting ready to retire in three years, is it?
Don't say that.
No, we don't want to hear it either.
We gotta have somebody in there that's up to speed and be able to take over. And one of the troubles that was worrying me was if something should happen to Diane before we hired an assistant, where would the town be? You know, if Diane had an accident, whatever, where would the town be with no treasurer?
Well, I'm, I'm sure you remember, you know, the, the process for moving from the elected to appointed treasurer was not an easy process.
No.
We had a lot of, I won't say sleepless nights over that, but a lot of tears shed over that process. So I, I don't think this is going to be any easier.
No, this will be no different.
Hope, hopefully it will be, but. You being the chair, you don't want people crying and handing the resignation letters out in the parking lot. Um, so, so one other question, then I'll shut up. Um, why not also make the move at this time to a Town Manager form of government?
We, we, we discussed that a little bit.
Yes, we did.
I, I'm all, I, I personally would, would agree with that. But at the time the board was there, it was, when we were talking about it, they, they decided not to. They didn't see anything wrong with the, uh, with the administrative part of it, so.
And that's not to say that we won't make that change in the future, but at that time, at that current board and the discussion, you know, Vince was just barely coming on board, he hadn't been here that long, he's really, you know, come on board and truly proving himself, he's been invaluable, uh, to all of us. And there could come the time that we make that decision, but at that juncture, we chose not to.
So, and Tom is the assistant administrator?
Yes.
Yeah. That's going to change sometime along here. We'll take and have, uh, Callie Streer become the assistant administrator. She is Diane's assistant now.
Oh.
When we hired her, it was to be Diane and Vince's assistant both. So Diane had more pressing issues than Vince did, right, Vince? That's correct. And, uh, and so we just had, uh, Ca- Diane training Callie to take and get the, uh, assistant treasurer's position down. And then as soon as that's done and she gets into doing the, uh, putting the records in the computer, then Vince will start having her do some work in the o- in his office.
And that's beneficial in terms of cross-training and adaptability of staff? And just having more people be able to help each other, as opposed to having things just very narrowed down to what someone can do, that'll be beneficial as well.
It's all a succession plan, too.
Exactly, mhm. Succession plan.
A lot of the town's activities now are focused on zoning and, um, water and sewer commissioners, so.
So he gets pulled in varying directions, and it'll be an extra help, for sure.
And with the assistant to Vince, one of the problems is Vince has said some very rude things, and that he's going to retire sometime along.
What?
That's what I said. But that's the, that's the whole, that's the whole thrust of this, is to get some succession, some, uh, ability to take and not have to worry if somebody gets sick or gets hurt, there, there's someone to take, uh, take and cover all of it. Any other questions?
I, I'd like to know how to reduce that tax instead of increase them.
And that's a very good question, you know, for certain, and that's something that past boards and even the current board, I would say, um, I for one, look very closely at where we can save and, you know, adjust, make those adjustments to keep the taxes down. And we're very proud that that has been the case over the last several years.
On that point, one of the things that I have been thinking of is that with the current rate of inflation, you are going to see a spike in insurance and all our other fixed costs. How to take and keep our taxes down, the only way to do it is spread it out to somebody who's not in town, and that's the local options tax.
And the numbers we were presented tonight, looking back at, like, twenty nineteen and pre-COVID, et cetera, as we all know, prices are going up astronomically.
Yeah.
And, um, that's, there's nothing we can do, it's going to happen, and this is a way to help the town, to take some pressure off residents. We're all, everyone who shops here, et cetera, or any of these, if it passes, it will affect. But in such a way that all those who are coming into our town, like Vince said, with the numbers of how many come throughout the day, uh, from other towns, et cetera, or out of state, that will benefit us. And I'm sure we will have more and more businesses coming in as time goes on.
You're sure of it.
I'm certain of it, there's no doubt in my mind, build it and they will come.
We'll see, we'll see.
I, I mean, you, you have to figure the, from, from the town resident, you know, twenty-nine-hundred people, you have quadrupled that number coming into this town during the day.
Daily basis.
Yes.
Berlin is the hub.
On a daily basis.
People travel through.
So. They're probably bringing their lunch, too.
And all of them.
Well, I mean, in recent times, you look at Applebee's, that's starting to come back. I mean, uh, when I was eating out, working, and I would take and buy my lunch, I'd either go to, uh, usually on the Barry Montpelier Road, all those restaurants, fast food and, and, uh, sit-down, they're all business. So it's, it's coming back.
I noticed last week Kentucky Fried Chicken, the line was all the way out, people had their blinkers on, and I hadn't seen that in a long time, and that excited me in that it shows that some of the businesses, whatever they're doing to draw the people in, it's working. You know, it could be an ad on the internet.
You try to go to Maplewood's at, at lunchtime and get a sandwich.
What I mean is they don't have any health insurance.
That's the unfortunate thing right now, for sure. And that is affecting everyone, I'm seeing it all over, for sure. Thank you, folks, for coming out tonight.
Any other questions on this?
Well, are you, you're going to now discuss Article Three?
Yes. If there's nothing else, I'll close the hearing for the charter change on the elected to appointed Town Clerk. And open the hearing on Article Three. Uh, Vince, would you read that? Sure. Article Three is the addition of personal property slash inventory taxation waiver. So under Subchapter Seven, Section seven dash three, it, it'll read with the addition of penalty for delinquent installments, and we'll add the following, and personal property inventory taxation. And then it'll go on to add Paragraph C, it defines it a little bit more. When the total assessed value of personal property or inventory taxation is equal to or less than one thousand six hundred fifty dollars, the Town Treasurer may, after approval of the select board, waive the personal property inventory taxation.
If it's under sixteen?
Six, one thousand six hundred and fifty or less.
Of taxable inventory, not, I think, dollars in taxes.
Correct.
Define personal property is, that's not just inventory?
Personal property?
Yeah, it's, it's related to this art.
Be what, store fixtures, uh?
That is what it says, it's a personal property, and you waive your inventory.
He said, Vince will double.
Okay.
How can I, how can I define that, best way to define it?
Because personal property is like my baseball collection.
Right, yeah, no, um, no, it's.
Is Section seven, uh, is Subchapter seven, Section seven-three only related to businesses? Is that the point?
Correct, yes.
So it's personal property, but it's within a business?
Yep.
Okay, that's right.
We, we currently have a personal property inventory tax on businesses. What this will do, I'm sorry to take.
No, go ahead.
Under Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Is, um, exempt these extremely small amounts, um, from that tax, which, gender, like, I think that sixteen fifty is like five dollars of taxes.
It costs Diane board collective.
Yes.
Process it.
And she's been very diligent, and she brings the list to us, and we review it, and then, you know, if deemed necessary, we waive it, approve the waiver.
It was just the definition.
It's just, it's not adding a, a new tax.
And it's not expanding either?
Correct, actu- actually.
It's just my experience. It's just my experience.
Uh, I'll take the point, and I'll see if I can work with the LCP or, or find a better definition to maybe further define that. Yeah.
That's excellent.
And then, again, we'll make it part of the, the revision of the language.
Thank you, Tor, for helping to explain that, I appreciate it.
Still good for something, huh?
You always are.
Anything else on this? Hearing none, I'll take and close the hearing. Motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you coming out tonight.
And I skip around here.